There is any reason that we were to get kicked out of this meeting. We have a go-to meeting, which is a different provider already set up and you guys would either get a phone call or an email so that we could continue with that meeting as well. If you have any problems, definitely use the chat if you can, otherwise send me a text message and we'll do what we can do.
Thank you very much. Are we ready then, Jeremy?
Other than Alderman Zaring, I cannot get him unmuted.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, there he is.
I think I was messing you up. That was my.
Okay, well, we don't have any ceremonial matters this evening, so we'll move on to public participation. Mr. Ratliff, did we have anyone submit an agenda request?
Hold on. There it is.
Yes, ma'am. We received an agenda request from Mr. Larry Strack from 810 North of Attlet Street.
Okay, Mr. Strack, are you on the call? Mr. Strack, are you in the meeting?
Hello?
Mr. Strack, is that you?
Yes, this is Larry Strack. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we have you. We're at the public participation point in our, in our meeting, so you have three minutes now to discuss your case with the board. You may proceed.
Okay, the first thing I'd like to do is request more time since this is a public, a land use matter. To go on, I present the city a considerable amount of information and will not have sufficient time to cover most of it at this BOA meeting. If you have questions or need further consideration or clarifications, I will do my best to provide answers if I allow time to do so. To those who I have unjustly offended and caused additional workloads, I apologize. To those that have helped and provided their best honest efforts, I thank you. I have talked to many city personnel and sent numerous emails. We attach pictures and information from municipal codes and design manuals. All the O A have been invited to visit the site to see the conditions for themselves. How this would be resolved and how it proceeds depends on you. The mayor and BOA were elected to hear and represent the citizens of Harrisonville, not to suppress or limit the citizens' ideas or inputs. I ask all of you to stop the dissemination of incorrect, inaccurate, and misleading information and to provide dependable, timely, and accurate information and actions to citizens of Harrisonville. Municipal Code 110 indicates the mayor shall be active in enforcing all laws and ordinances and shall cause all subordinate officers to be dealt with promptly for any collective violation of duty. After reviewing the information submitted and hearing my appeal, I request that the BOA vote to show if they support the repeal, a decision of the city engineer as agreed. It is misleading when it stated that flooding at my property was not caused by blockages from dervison that was placed in a ditch or that the culvert is about the right size. The city chooses to support the opinion about a backwater effect from downstream obstruction throughout investigation of providing any evidence to support that opinion. The Public Works Director even stated in his letter to the mayor that undersized culverts result in homes flooding along this creek. If there are backwater effects during the 2017 flood, by downstream obstructions, there would have been swift, would not have been swift current to erode the neighbors' driveways on the downside stream at Hefell Terrace. That driveway would have been in backwaters during the flood and backwater has very little current. The city staff may agree with Mr. Martin's opinion on the backwater effect, but those opinions are not supported by facts or science. Unless facts and science prove the opinion accurate, must be dismissed. I think the city employees and staff confused the requirements of Section 420, which applies only certain lands identified as Zones A and AE on the flood insurance map, which requires a Section 415 that applies to my property. My property is not located within those zones on a firm map. It is hard to convince city employees and staff otherwise when their stance is, I don't have time to read those standards and refuse to even look at the applicable ordinances, maps, and standards. And I am asking for a vote on the decision to repeal the city engineer's decision. Thank you for your time. If there's any questions and I'm allowed to answer, I will address those now.
Well, we thank you for your input, Mr. Strack. That'll be all for this evening. And we'll move on now to the approval of the minutes. First thing is the minutes of the work session, the Board of Aldermen for May 4th.
Do approve.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Reese. May I have a roll call, please?
Alderman Dorhoff.
Hi.
Alderman Miller.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Dickerson.
Hi.
Alderman Milner.
Hi.
Alderman Zaring.
Hi.
Alderman Reese.
Hi.
And Alderman Davidson.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen for the work session stand approved as read. Moving on to the minutes of the regular meeting for May 4th. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner with a second from Alderman Zaring to approve the minutes of the regular meeting of the Board of Aldermen. Roll call, please.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Dickerson.
Hi.
Alderman Reese.
Hi.
Alderman Davidson.
Hi.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Hi.
Alderman Miller.
Hi.
Alderman Zaring.
Hi.
And Alderman Milner.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. The minutes of the Board of Aldermen stand approved. Moving on to the agenda items, the first thing is the 2020 Farmer's Market Event Permit. Is that Chief Hofer?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the board. Before you tonight is, before you tonight is the 2020 Farmer's Market Event Permit Application proposed by the Love the Square and the applicant Amanda Stites. They are proposing to host a weekly Farmer's Market on the square as they've done for, for many years. I think this is about the eighth year. They do it on Saturday mornings. They're requesting to do it from June through September, each Saturday morning. They'll block the square about 7:00 AM, set up, and then close down about noon and have to about 1:00 to get the square cleaned up. The applicant is anticipating a crowd size of about 150 to 200 over the four-hour period. They are very cognizant of the COVID-19 issues. They discussed it with the Farmer's Market Association, as well as the Department of Agriculture and the Cass County Health Department, and they're going to follow those guidelines weekly. If things should change, they will adjust or cancel if needed. We've had no problems with the event in years past. There is no cost to the city as the street department will provide the barricades. They'll do it while on duty on Friday and then pick it up on, on Monday. Staff is recommending approval, and I entertain any questions. Any questions I can't answer, the applicant is supposed to be on the line as well.
Does the board have any questions for the chief?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Milner. Could I ask who the second was?
Either Davidson or Zaring.
Okay, I'll take Davidson for the second. And before we take the vote, I just wanted to make the board aware that the Farmer's Market and the Junk in the Trunk events both now are under the umbrella of Love the Square, and as such, it will be Love the Square providing the insurance for these events. That's something that the city has done in the past, but now the Love the Square organization will be doing that, so. All right, we have the motion and the second. They have roll call, please.
Alderman Miller.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Milner.
Hi.
Alderman Dickerson.
Hi.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Hi.
Alderman Davidson.
Hi.
Alderman Reese.
Hi.
And Alderman Zaring.
Hi.
Thank you. So the event permit for the Farmer's Market for this coming year stands approved. Moving on to the Junk, Junk in the Trunk Special Event Permit. Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a monthly event similar to the Farmer's Market. It is held the second Saturday of the month, June through October. They'll close the square around 4:00. The square will be closed from 4:00 till about 7:00. They'll use the east, north, and west sides first, and then they've asked for use of the old hotel lot, the parking lot there at Lexington Curl, if they have any overflow. If it continues further than that, they'll use the south side, which requires a significant closure of the square. That, at that point, I think the street department would need to be closing the square because you need to close it down by the police department at Chestnut Street, as well as Independence at Mechanic Street, so there's some additional closures there. But until we get to the south side, they, they'll be doing similar to the Farmer's Market, and they'll be closing it themselves and opening it up themselves. This is a, a larger crowd than the Farmer's Market. It's pretty significant, but we do have, I think, until June 13th before the first one, so maybe some of the COVID-19 things will be more relaxed by that time. Something we're going to monitor as a staff, and the insurance, as the mayor said earlier, for this will be provided by Love the Square this year as well. So I think I've covered everything. Entertain any questions.
Questions for Chief Hofer? I'd entertain a motion if there are no questions.
Make a motion to approve. Okay.
Who was the first, please?
Dorhoff.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion from Alderman Dorhoff with a second from Alderman Turner. All in, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Alderman Miller.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Dickerson.
Hi.
Alderman Reese. Alderman Zaring.
Hi.
Alderman Davidson.
Hi.
Alderman Milner.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thank you. That special event permit is approved. Is there someone in the meeting from the Love the Square organization?
She's muted.
That's fine. I just wanted to.
Hi. Amanda Stites for Love the Square. Sorry.
Hi, Amanda. I just want to know that we appreciate the relationship with Love the Square. It's another one of those strategic partnerships that we love to, to nurture and to have. So thank you again for what you do for the community with both of these events, and we're happy to have you renew your, your event for this next upcoming year.
Absolutely, and thank you for the support from the city.
Absolutely. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the agenda item then to the Municipal Waste Services Extension to their contract. Is that you, Mr. Ratliff?
You, Brian.
Okay. Mr. Jones, are you ready to talk about that?
I am. We, Municipal Waste Services was issued a three-year contract with the, on January of 2018, so it'll expire in December of this year, but they were given the option to extend that for one year. And Mr. Moore has sent us a, an extension, and you'll see that in the packet, that he wants to remain at the current rate of 1380 and continue to offer waste removal, but do it year-round and, and not have the off months. And in turn, he will not offer the 3% early pay discount that he was. So Mr. Maurer has looked at it, at it, and he has made one little change to it to add that owner would approve any background checks for his employees before they're hired. And Mr. Moore is on the line. He's on here if, if anyone has any questions for him also.
Anyone have questions for Mr. Moore?
I'd have a question for the city first. Have there been any complaints in regards to municipal waste in the last several years? And is there really a need to extend that service during the months when really there's very little waste service picked up?
Well, I'll speak to that, Alderman. Prior to your coming on the board, we had some issues with the, the past trash hauler, and municipal waste came on to us about three years ago now. And I have to tell you that by comparison, we've had relatively few issues with municipal waste, and they've been very responsive to any issues that we've had. I think it's beneficial to the citizens to be able to have year-round yard waste. It's something that, that they asked for the last time, and Mr. Moore wasn't able to provide. So I'm, I for one am pleased because I heard from so many residents that really felt like year-round yard waste was a real benefit to them. So I think what we have here is our vendor who is offering us the same price at $13.80 per resident per month, continuing curbside recycling, giving us yard, sorry, year-round yard waste removal, and, and again, doing that for the same price. I will say that the addition that we've made to this agreement, there was an issue that I discussed with Mr. Moore with one of his employees, which he has resolved, and we just wanted to include the background check in this extension going forward. So I guess that's a long answer to your question. I think it's probably beneficial for the city to be able to have another year to enjoy a $13.80 per month trash fee without any increase. And then, of course, we can reevaluate the contract again at the end of that one year. Does that answer your question?
Yes, it did, Mayor. Thank you very much.
Yes. Any other questions for myself or for Mr. Moore? Can we unmute Mr. Moore so he can speak to the board?
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
Okay, yes, the, the, the yard waste service, it is very minimal in the winter months that we was not accepting it, or we was not taking it, I guess I should say. But there is a need for some of the residents to do it, so it's just, I think it's just the right thing to do at this time, just to go ahead and offer it to them at the same price. So that way we don't increase anybody, but it also expands their service just a little bit as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Any other questions from anyone? Comments?
One thing, it's minimal. I did notice on some of your trucks, Brian, you have some leaks, and I've seen a lot of fluid that's been left on the roads after your trucks.
Yes, we, we did notice there was one or two of those, and those problems has been resolved unless there has been a new one come up that we're not aware of yet. Yes, we will have hydraulic brakes and things of that nature as we go forward, but we, we try to make sure that we do stay on top of that. And when, and when it is brought to our attention, it will be taken care of just as quick as humanly possible as well. We've actually also went out on the street in a couple of areas. We had a couple of hoses that was blue that was inside the body, and, and God bless the driver, he, he did not know that it was leaking until he come back down the other side of the street, but we did go out and make an effort to take care of those as well.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Does that answer your question, Alderman?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion. We approve. Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Turner. Was the second from Alderman Dorhoff?
Yes.
Thank you. So I have a motion from Alderman Turner with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. Roll call, please.
Alderman Milner. Alderman Dickerson.
Hi.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Hi.
Alderman Miller.
Hi.
Alderman Turner.
Hi.
Alderman Zaring.
Hi.
Alderman Reese.
Hi.
And Alderman Davidson.
Hi.
Thank you. So welcome, Mr. Moore, to another year's service to the city of Harrisonville.
Thank you and to the board. I appreciate your time. We look forward to continuing the same service that you've been getting. Thank you again.
Thank you, sir. All right, moving on to Alderman, the committee reports. Alderman Zaring.
All right, Madam Mayor, board. Just a few things. The past week, I wanted to thank Brad. I hit him up with several things earlier in the week, and I tell you what, the timely response and how quick we, he, he got back to me and got some issues resolved was, was great. Same way with the chief. I appreciate his help with some of the things we were asking for out here. The street crew got speed limit sign put up that it, that was down. So thanks to everybody. I mean, the staff, I mean, everybody's been great in, and very responsive in any needs that we've raised up. So I just wanted to give them a big, a big thank you and a big pat on the back.
Thank you, Alderman. Thank you for caring about your ward, and thank you for going through the city administrator with requests and concerns. I appreciate that. Alderman Dorhoff?
I have nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Milner.
Hi.
Alderman Reese.
Um. Am I on?
We've got you.
I, basically, I want to, I want to thank Chief Hofer for the performance of the police department this last couple of weeks. I've been seeing things on the internet that they have really got some challenges this week, and, and they do it so graciously, you know? And so just, just many thanks to your department, chief.
Thank you, Alderman Reese. Alderman Miller?
Yes, ma'am. I do have a report following up on the park board meeting from last Tuesday evening, and I followed up with Chris Steele today to verify some of your information. As we all know, the community center opened last Monday, and we opened to 141 people that day. By the end of the week, we were averaging 200. Today at 4:00 PM, they'd already had 201 signed in, so today looks like it's going to be the best day yet. The maximum capacity under current rules is 226 at one time, so we're still well within that. An average daily attendance is approximately 350 people under normal type circumstances. Day camp also opened last week for the kids. We had 12, and this week we've got about the same, and they are following the CDC and the state guidelines for that. Summer camp starts next week on the 26th, and we have approximately 12 signed up for that at the moment. Room rentals are available with some limitations currently, but they're following the state guidelines, and that's all right. Fitness classes have started. They are available at the center and on the virtual also. As most of you probably know by now, last Tuesday night, park board meeting, the park board probably made one of the toughest decisions they've ever had to make in a long, long time. The decision was made, and it was unanimous decision by the park board that the swimming pool at the city park will remain closed for the 2020 season, primarily for the current safety, current safety COVID conditions and for financial reasons as well. Fourth of July celebration, nothing has been determined at this point, other than it will be reviewed at their next park board meeting on June the 9th by the park board, and a decision will be made at that time. And of course, that will be in conjunction with following the state's guidelines at that point. And finally, the good news is the Dog Park Fund has reached $40,000. We've had three donors recently, Whistle Concrete, right here in Harrisonville, near me, has agreed to donate concrete. There was a $1,500 check from Walmart, and I believe Sandy Franklin paid a big part in that, so thank you, Sandy. You did a great job there. And they also received a $1,000 check from an anonymous donor. So all is going well under current circumstances with the park board and the community center. And that concludes my report for this, this month.
Madam Mayor, I have Alderman Miller, a question.
Certainly.
Alderman Miller, can you speak on two rumors, since you are on the park board and you were at the meeting? There's two rumors that I've heard from other Aldermen that have heard this, that you could clear up real easy. One is that the city administrator, by my, by myself, closed the outdoor pool, and the other rumor is that I showed up to your meeting and made you all close the pool.
Really?
That's the rumor. So can you clear that up?
Unbelievable. Absolutely. That is 100% false. There is no truth in that whatsoever. This was a decision by the park board and no one else.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You are welcome.
Alderman Dickerson? Alderman Dickerson, are you on?
Oh, I have nothing.
Thank you. Alderman Davidson?
I have nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Turner?
As well as Brad, I've heard a lot of complaints about the outdoor pool being closed. A lot of people reaching out saying that that should have been our decision, not the park boards' that they overreached. But I mean, that's their point is to be over that. But I mean, I understand the reasons why and stuff, but I mean, we're still getting a lot of people that's mad about it. It is what it is. And then also, Brad, thanks for doing a good job and keeping us informed when you get complaints or things happen within city and our wards and keeping us informed. That's it.
Thank you, Alderman Turner. I'm going to move on to reports from the city administrator, and perhaps, Mr. Ratliff, you can address the concern about the decision not having been made by the board, because I remember that you did apprise the board of the plans for reopening the city at our last meeting. So could you address that perhaps?
Yes, ma'am. I can start out with that. It was, I know that Chris Steele really struggled with that decision as well. We were dealing with, as you all know, in the meetings of COVID, how it's affected just not our businesses, but how it affects any of them coming in. And then with the restrictions that are still out there of how to, how to be able to meet the needs in all of the services that is provided. So it was a, it was a two-fold discussion for safety as well as for revenue. When we, as the apartment heads had discussions the week prior, the discussion was to brief the board on that Monday night, the different things that would be done as far as when the lobbies of City Hall and what the plan was that the parks would like to do. And the purpose of that was to make sure that the Aldermen didn't have any major objections to any of those recommendations before we implemented it. And the purpose of that was to make sure that the Aldermen didn't have any major objections to any of those recommendations before we implemented it. As you all recall, that everybody seemed okay with it, and I believe it was Alderman Milner that just asked for us to email it to the Aldermen so that they would have it in case they had questions, which I made sure to get those out. And then, the park board would go through the painstaking part of the actual part of that decision, since the Aldermen didn't have any objections. And so, as their appointed group and utilizing even the statute as a part of that, the park board had to make the tough decision, as Alderman Miller pointed out. I wasn't at the meeting, but I know that Mr. Deal said that it was a good fifteen, twenty-minute discussion, and it was very painstaking for the park board to come to that conclusion. So, they discussed it a lot and looked at it every angle that they could, and so, we appreciate the park board working diligently, and I know Alderman Miller and Mayor Bowman also were a part of those discussions, and it wasn't, it wasn't easy for anybody. Nobody deals, you know, we have manuals on what we do for tornado and for floods and for all type of major events, but a pandemic of this, this type is a fairly new thing for cities to deal with. And so, everybody is, is working diligently with the information that they have at the time, and so, I appreciate the park board, appreciate Alderman Miller pointing out those details and how difficult it was for them to make that decision. And it's, it's never easy, and, and you try to do what's in the best of the public. With that, further discussions, I know that some of you have been waiting for when we could find out from the core on when, what type of meeting that could be conducted. I can tell you that it's, and I know Ted Martin's on the line too. It's been hard to get a hold of people on the federal level because they're on different type of shifts now, and also, a lot of them working from home. But I just today got confirmation from them that they are going to plan for a face-to-face type of meeting on June twenty-fourth from six P M. to eight P M. So, you might all pencil that in. They know that it is our desire that they do the face-to-face. They were first discussing doing something of a audiovisual. And I know that especially the two Aldermen, Mr. Davidson, also Mr. Turner, were concerned as well as the mayor to do an audiovisual, because a lot of times, a lot of things are missed in the audiovisual to do some type of face-to-face presentation. So, I just got that notification today that they are going to try, and they think from the different restrictions that are coming out on the federal level, that they would be able to aim to do a June twenty-fourth from six P M. to eight P M. I shot a email later today to Mr. Deal about utilizing the community center as that location to make sure that we can set up the different places for information for the residents from FEMA, from the city, from the core, and the other agencies, MoDOT as well, to be able to get the information. So, happy to report that to you today. As we go along and we get more confirmations on this, we'll be sure to make sure the board's well aware of everything and making sure that we're getting the information out to the citizens as well. The, this, today was the last phase of employees signing up for their health insurance via teleconferencing to make sure that each employee was able to have an, a agent to talk to on their signup. We also, Cass County initially had sent out to us, and I believe I reported to you all, that they were believing that from the twelve million that they received in COVID expenditures for reimbursement to cities and to themselves for any type of COVID expenditures. They were first telling us we were gonna get around opportunity to reimburse up to eight hundred and sixty-four thousand about, oh, Wednesday, I believe, of last week. We received an email that they were going to walk that back because some additional information came of, through their F A Qs of how the money could be utilized, and that some cities' amounts may change. I'm, as your city administrator, telling you as the board, I think that they're gonna, they found a way to utilize some funds for reimbursement on the county level, and probably most of the cities will see some type of drop in those available funds. But we're getting, we're being very diligent on the department head level to make sure that we're tracking all of those expenses and making sure that we can get the city reimbursed for the additional costs that are out there as a result of the pandemic. One of the things that the utility department will be doing is getting information together for you all for their meeting in June of outstanding accounts and recommendations to you as a board on what to do with those outstanding accounts. More than likely, we'd be recommending to the board that people need to begin to start setting up a payment plan with the city, and if not, then to move, we would have to have the discussion about moving forward with shut-offs. We've been in a conference with NPUA, who has already begun that process of utilizing that in other communities that have began to move forward with those type of recommendations. And so, we'll make sure that we get you all the most common-used information from the other utilities, as well as tailoring something here for Harrisonville that's best fit for Harrisonville. The staff have been working to install the Verizon GPS monitors into the fleet where we're able to keep track of city assets, and one of the things that we hope to be accomplished by this winter is a, a snowplow portal where citizens can watch where the snowplows are going and where they've been. That's the main purpose that we would like to utilize that, and to be able to communicate to the citizens when there's those type of activities that are going on. Cedarhurst continues to move forward. I know that Chris Arthur and them have finished up a lot of their reviews on that, and so, we're getting close to the issuance of the permit for that development, so we're looking forward to that as well. Lastly, with the COVID, we're still at stage three of the May fourth that I gave out to the board for that night, and we're continuing to move forward with that. We're hoping we did get with Santa Fe glass here in town about installing the glass for the protection of employees on the front at the utility. And if that gets in, if that comes in quicker than anticipated, then we will then talk about moving up the date on that expectation to allow people utilize the utility portion, or utility department. And with that, Madam Mayor, I think that's all I have unless there's any additional questions by you or the board.
Questions for Mr. Ratliff?
When's the next update on the financial condition of the city?
It would be at the June meeting. It'd probably be the second meeting in June to make sure that we have all the receipts from the state on the sales tax that comes in for the month of May.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Alright. Well, you have the April twenty twenty municipal court report in your packet, and now I'll move on to questions from the media. Mr. Minnick, are you on?
I am on. I have no questions.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Under my comments, Chief Myler, are you on the meeting? Are you still with us? I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, there he is.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes. Would you just let us know about testing of first responders?
We tested forty-six employees, and we came back with, everybody was negative on the test, with the exception of four employees that were positive for the antibodies, which basically means that they've either been exposed or they're somewhat immune to the, to the COVID virus. We had a good results. The doctor, Dr. Latnis with Cass Regional, basically stated, "We ran a clean ship," so it obviously shows that we've been protecting our employees to the best we can and had pretty good outcome.
Excellent. I appreciate that. Thank you for that report. I want to just pause just a second and acknowledge that we have a new employee in our midst who actually began work today. That would be Mr. Clark. Are you on the call, Mr. Clark? He was.
He's muted.
Okay. Well, you know, when, at the last election, when voters elected me, they asked what we could do to move Harrisonville forward, and I'm pleased to let you know that we're now building that team of people that can do exactly that. Jim Clark has returned to the city of Harrisonville as the Community and Economic Development Director, and today was his first day back. So, I know that the board will want to welcome him back and certainly will help him get our businesses back on their feet, businesses that have been impacted by the COVID nineteen virus, and then certainly help to get our city moving. So, Mr. Clark, welcome back to Harrisonville.
He's on now.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion from Alderman Davidson with a second from Alderman Dorhoff. Roll call, please.
Alderman Zaring.
Aye.
Alderman Reese. Alderman Davidson.
Aye.
Alderman Dorhoff.
Aye.
Alderman Miller.
Aye.
Alderman Dickerson.
Aye.
Alderman Milner.
Aye.
And Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone. We are adjourned. Good night.